Okay, it's six o'clock. If we all want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and get the meeting going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, have all the board members had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, I can make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. And item number three, the superintendent's report, Mr. Jesse.
Thank you, Board President Wheeler, other board directors, student representatives, staff, families, and also our students today. Welcome. I would like to start off, just, it is parent-teacher conference week, so you can see that by just how full the parking lot is. I've talked to some of our principals, and they said they're really getting high rates, like, almost all of their parents or guardians are showing up. And so I really want to thank truly our families and our educators for taking the time to come together to support our students. It's really important that we have that really strong partnership that can help further the education of each and every one of our students by story, strength, and need. That story, strength, and need can only be had by, again, coming together and sharing what it is that we're working on for our student, both at home and here at our schools, and really just trying to empower our students themselves to be their own learners. And so, some of our older students over here, our student reps, are really good examples of some of the work that we are able to do over the years, as they are very well-spoken, knowledgeable, and of course, leaders in our community. Last week, well, the week before, I was at the Early Learning Center, and so that is just right across the back parking lot here. Really nice to get the ELC, I'm a super-strong believer in preschool. It is, what I like to say is, ability to learn how to navigate schools. Students come in, they learn a lot of the social skills that we're really looking to help support them in, and then also just about, obviously, the engagement and excitement about learning. And our ELC staff are outstanding, I love going over there. Talk about a warm and welcoming environment to go into there, they have a play center right in the middle of the building, and they, where students can play, and some of our students with IEPs are also able to get some other related services like speech-language pathology, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. And then in the back, we also have a bilingual preschool program where we are to support our students who generally speak mom-konkaball and Spanish, and that's a really nice, powerful program. They're running on a thematic unit right now around bees and flowers, so that was really cool. And so they have a lot of books and learning, and kids get read, too. Very powerful, and so, again, my hat off to all the ELC staff and how they do to dedicate to our young learners, and of course, working, again, with our families. Really cool week for the Shelton School District. As I've mentioned before in the past, we are working to create 20-hour internships, so that is like, literally, like, that's what you hear here, 20 hours of internship for our high school students as part of our academy model. And so that first placement started this last week. I got a picture and a story of one of our students who's starting here at the Mason County Executive, I'm sorry, Economic Development Committee. So that's really exciting for them, and really need to hear, I can look forward to hearing more details. They're going to be able to shadow the three employees for EDC, so I'm looking forward to learning more about those experiences. And we have other experiences happening at other businesses and organizations here in Mason County. Last, a little bit of a did you know, we offer an employee assistance program, so for, one of the things that we had started three years ago, coming off of COVID, we knew a number of our employees needed assistance, just about what are the resources that we can do to support them in their own emotional and mental health. So we offer an employee assistance program where we can connect them to high-quality, appropriate services that they may need. Educating nowadays is really a challenging profession, obviously also a very rewarding profession, but, you know, when you're supporting a lot of our students and a lot of our families, and with a high degree of accountability for yourself, sometimes you just need another voice to hear you and support you the best we can. So I'm really glad that we have that employee assistance program that Linda Arnold, our previous executive director of HR, helped start, and Tamitha Whiting is also able to help carry through, so as we enhance those programs and services for our employees. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, to Board President Wheeler. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, item number four is community comments. As part of the regular school board meeting, the board welcomes community members to make public comments in person and/or by phone as conditions allow. If speaking in person, please follow the public comment procedures by signing in, stating your name at the podium when called by the board chair. If making comments by phone, dial 1-253-215-8782 and enter ID, meeting ID number 810-6874-9921. Each person is allowed three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, the board will not allow, or board is not allowed to discuss items that are not on the agenda. The board will direct the superintendent to follow up with any items that arise during public comment as appropriate. The board requests all speakers to use civil and appropriate comments and refrain from disrupting the business of the board. We ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. Persons with disabilities requiring special accommodations to participate may contact the superintendent's office to make arrangements. And first up, we have Marilyn Aaron.
Good evening, my name is Marilyn Aaron. So first, I want to acknowledge the ongoing issue of bullying that I'm sure every school district across the country deals with, but it's especially relevant in light of tonight's discussion on disciplinary policy changes. Bullying remains a serious concern, and while it is an ongoing topic, we must be vigilant in addressing it effectively. Kids need to be held accountable for their actions, but accountability should come hand-in-hand with teaching them valuable life lessons. The balance is key. Sometimes those lessons require tougher consequences than what the current Shelton's success plan outlines. Adjusting disciplinary policies can help ensure that our students not only understand the importance of their actions, but also learn how to change their behavior for the better. We need a policy that emphasizes both accountability and growth. Sometimes less disciplinary actions isn't always better. The second issue I want to highlight is the budget freeze, particularly regarding elementary staffing. There's a critical lack of support staff such as educational assistants. They play vital roles in supervising recess, lunch periods, and assisting with reading groups. For instance, here at Mountain View, we currently only have one secretary in the office because the other secretary is out on leave. This places an immense strain on Julie to make sure that everything gets completed in the day, and it doesn't appear that there's any availability for help for her. Moreover, last week, there was an email sent out in regards to paper and lack thereof, that this next bulk supply, once the order runs out, that's it, teachers will be responsible for purchasing their own paper. I went to all my kids' parent-teacher conferences today, and while I appreciate all the handouts and the student-parent contracts between the schools, sometimes maybe we need to look at evaluating what's more important, putting paper in the students' hands, or having a paper handout for parents to take home and possibly recycle, or maybe there'll be too much left over that the school will recycle it themselves. We need to ensure that the teachers and the students have the tools that they need. Lastly, I'd like to address class sizes and enrollment disparities. Mountain View and Bordeaux have over 500 students each, while Evergreen has just over 300. Around two years ago, a group was formed to assess and discuss boundary changes for the district's three elementary schools. They even brought in an outside consultant to evaluate and provide insight. This group met for over a year and presented their findings to the board in June of 2023. However, crickets, we have heard nothing since then, nothing's been communicated. The public deserves answers, and the families in the community deserve answers, as our children are being impacted by all of this. Their education is directly affected by the decisions being made, and we need to ensure that all our elementary schools, and all our schools actually, are properly staffed and supported. I will email you the rest, because I have a little bit more to add.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody?
Nope.
Okay. Item number five, reports and recognition. We'll start off with 5.01, the report from the student board representatives, and we'll start with Kylie Allen from Joyce.
Okay, well, it's obviously currently conference week, and I think so far ours have been going pretty well, at least, oh, sorry. It's conference week, and I think ours have been going pretty well so far, and I think I've seen a surplus of students actually at school this week, surprisingly, even though it's half-days. And then we have our science classes working on painting our community garden shed, purple, of course, that's our school color, and laying gravel, walkways. And then, we also have our spirit week coming up, that I've seen posters for about all around the school.
Thank you. Alan Ramirez from Cedar.
Yeah, I just have a few things to say. The main thing, I just wanted to let the school board know, is that Cedar High School has planned a haunted house to be hosted at Cedar. It'll be on the 30th of October from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. It's mostly gonna be focused on scares for older kids, because I do feel like we have a lack of that here in Shelton, you know? Haunted houses that are scary enough for teenagers. I also wanted to say that we have our spirit week planned, and we've designed it in such a way that it's gonna be more engaging for students, where they'll sort of vote for a winner of that spirit week every single day. And for the block, the class that I'm in at the beginning of the day, we have begun landscaping the hill behind Cedar High School, and I'd like to say that it's a very nice opportunity to be at the campus on Cedar High School. Olympic College campus is really nice. Right now, what we're really waiting for is for all of our plants to arrive so that we can get busy planting them. I know personally, I haven't planted, I have made a design for the pond at Cedar High School, and, not to toot my own horn, but I do think it's a pretty good landscape plan.
Outstanding. Okay, Abigail Hurst from Shelton High School.
Volleyball, football, cheer, and dance all have senior nights this week. Volleyball's is on Thursday, football, cheer, and dance are on Friday. And leadership class shadow boxes are being worked on all throughout the school. Senior fundraisers are going on right now, one is for senior photos being taken. DECA is running a winter clothing drive, and a safety survey is going out soon to advisory students to help students feel more safe around SHS.
Thank you. Any questions, guys? Okay, super. Okay, 5.02, the Shelton High School School Improvement Plan with Mr. Bruce Kipper.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, student reps, Superintendent Jesse, thank you for the opportunity to share our plan with you tonight. Also like to thank Mr. Stewart and Ms. Dray for showing up tonight. Ms. Numers was left behind at conferences, we have evening conferences tonight, so. Let's see if I, there we go. All right. So first, let's take, I wanted to take a look back at last year. Last year, when I presented, we shared our goals with you, and we were really excited about the results we got. If you remember, we had two goals, one was our freshman success goal, where our goal was to get 79% of our freshmen earning six or more credits. If you remember, the year before, it was 69%, we were shooting for a 10% growth, which is a lofty goal. And we ended up actually at 79.5%. So our entire freshman class grew by 10 and 1/2% from the year previous. I will share with you some of the reasons why I think and that we believe that happened. And if we had, if you remember, we had three focus groups. One of our focus groups was our freshman students with IEPs. They actually grew by 14% from the year before. Our second group was our multi-language group, and they grew by 6% from the year before. And then our students that identify as native, our freshman students, they grew by 4%. And they had actually outperformed the other groups the previous year. So while 4% doesn't seem like a lot of growth, they're up at 80%, so they're actually outperforming our entire freshman class, when you look at the numbers. Our second goal we had was to tackle cellphones, which was maybe even more loftier than tackling ninth-grade success, to be honest with you. Since the pandemic, since the pandemic has been going on, and we've recovered from that, we have seen us students exponentially grow in their reliance on their phones, and it is really difficult to get students to put their phones down. And so, as a staff, we decided we were going to tackle that. And the overall number of incidences actually dropped from 219 to 164 with our entire student body. We had what we call our major infractions, so a lot of times when you ask a student to put their phone away, it doesn't always go so well, and it turns into a disruption or a disturbance in the classroom. And those actually dropped also by almost 20 incidents from the year before. And then one of our focus groups was our 11th grade male students. They had the largest number of infractions the year before. They were actually 33 and 1/2% of all the referrals the year before. That actually dropped to 10% with our juniors last year. And so we did see a significant drop in the number of incidences we were having to deal with. The last group we looked at was our ninth-grade students, and their incidences actually went up. And that's attributed to the fact that we actually dealt with it. We actually asked teachers to deal with these in class and not just overlook them. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were focusing on our freshmen, and that setting the tone early that they needed to be engaged in their learning, and phones needed to be put away. So I'm not disappointed that it went up, it actually told me the teachers were actually dealing with it. This year, our goals for this year, so we still have our freshman success goal, and we're actually shooting for that 10% again, which would actually put us just below 90% of our freshmen. I will tell you that school, in my experience, until you get to 90% of your freshmen earning six or more credits, it's a tier-one issue in your campus. It's a school, it's a school-wide issue we have to deal with. We can't intervene, as Mr. Jesse likes to tell me, we can't intervene our way out of this. So even, so as you approach 90%, it gets harder to get to that number, but we're shooting for that number, just under that 89 and 1/2%. We still have our three focus groups that we're looking at, working to get them to make another 10% jump. And we feel really excited about our strategies, they've proven to get results, and so we believe that this is attainable. Our second goal is, we're gonna look at some behavior, a behavior goal, and look at decreasing the number of incidences, the number of students we have that are excluded from school because of behavior. I know that it's easy just to not write referrals, that would certainly lower the number, but we want to, we want to mix in both accountability and grow, and helping our students grow. They are young, they are, I mean, some of our students are 13 or 14 years old still. And some of our upperclassmen are still there, too, mentally. So we need to help them not only be accountable for their behavior, but also help them grow as young adults and make better choices. I kind of like to use the two-strike rule, like, hey, first time, let's see if we can get you to grow, second time, we may have to be a little more strict. So the two focus groups that we're looking at, we're looking at ninth-through-12th grade students that had four or more referrals last year, including one exclusion. So looking at students that have had some incidences in the past, and trying to get with them quick, as soon as we can, early in the year, and provide them support before they have any incidences happen. And that includes the ninth graders last year when they were at OBJ, looking at the incidences they had also. And then our second group that we're looking at are our ninth-through-12th grade students who identify as native. Even though that number of eight last year seems small, they are overrepresented in our discipline, and while many of them may not face an exclusion, we want to prevent them from getting to the point where they may be excluded from school. So we're really excited about tackling these two goals. The staff really buys into what we're doing, we share all the numbers with them, we share who the particular students are we're focusing on, and try to provide them support, and like I like to tell our staff, if you provide support to the students that need it the most, you help every student in your school. And then some of the strategies that we're using this year, some of them we are carrying over from last year, because they've proven to be successful. I know that Mr. Jesse likes to use the phrase, "Know students, story, strengths, and needs." And we're doing that by, one, having teachers and staff greet students by name when they see them, as they come in the classroom, or see them around campus. Also by having teachers, what we call confer with students during class, so when students are doing independent work, having teachers actually engage with them, not only to assess where they're at learning-wise, but to assess where they're at as a person, like, what's going on in their life, how are they, are they facing some difficulties that they may need support with? And then also by giving students some choice in assignments and projects, letting them personalize their learning for them, and then engaging students in conversations about their passions and their interests. Another strategy is what we call a DO NOW, which is as soon as students come in the classroom, teachers having an activity ready for students to get them involved in their learning, and get them engaged right from the, from the beginning of class. Don't give them time to get off track. Also monitoring grades and engaging students in self-reflection and advisory, probably the two biggest things we've done so far, school-wide would be our advisory class and having some really focused lessons, and helping students understand what it means to be accountable for their learning, and taking ownership of their learning. But in order to do that, you have to let them personalize it. And the other thing is our freshman seminar class. We have had a number of staff members that have just jumped both feet in. In fact, one of our TOSSs that oversees the freshman academy wrote a textbook for the class. And it's bound and professional-looking, and it's engaging for kids. And so that class really has, I think, helped us get our, the research is really clear, if a freshman is struggling after the first six to nine weeks of school, their freshman year is really difficult. And so we want to focus that first trimester and get those kids engaged, get them focused on their learning, teaching them what does it, what does it mean to earn credits in high school. It's the first time they've actually had to earn credit, and so that they can be responsible for their learning. And then, of course, our academies have gone a long way to help students personalize their learning also. And then our orientation program, Ms. Dray is in charge of our freshman class, and she has really built, with the help of our staff members, a really comprehensive two-day orientation for our freshmen, so when they walk in the first day of school, they know exactly where they're supposed to be, where their classes are, and what's expected of them. And then our behavior goal, the four main strategies that we're using, one is, we're really focused on implementing the elements of PBIS in our classrooms and on our campus. We have signage around campus about what the expectations are in each area, whether you're in the sub, or you're in a classroom, or you're in the 100 building, or even the front office. There are clear expectations about what, how students are expected to behave. Also, displaying what we call the problem-solving process. Each classroom has an anchor chart that has a three-to-four-step process on if a student is having difficulties, that they're having some challenges, how to exactly to solve that? Do they need to take a break? Do they need to talk to the teacher later? Even goes as far as, are they hungry? You know? What's going on that's causing these feelings, and then what are the, what are some things they can do about it so they don't blow up right then? And that's in, that's in every single classroom in our, in our, in our campus. And then also in, like I talked about earlier, incorporating student choice into our classes, giving kids the chance to actually engage in things they're interested in. And then lastly, employing restorative practices in response to student behavior. I know that some may think that doing that is letting kids off the hook, I think just the opposite of that, it's actually holding kids accountable, and then figuring out what is the appropriate consequence. Sometimes we, sometimes kids need to be off-campus for a bit, depending on what their behavior is, but just sending them off-campus isn't enough. We have to engage in those practices if we're gonna bring them back to campus and change their behavior. That's all I've got. Questions?
Questions, comments, anybody?
I'll jump in with a question, because it came from the student, Abigail Hurst there was talking about a safety survey. Is that something that gets rolled up to you as the principal? And I would love to hear some feedback on that when that is done, because it's, it would be great to hear what the students have to say about the student safety there on the campus. I'm curious about that, I know you don't have an answer about that right now. I really liked your report, I really like seeing how far things have come and the different categories. I have two students at Shelton High School, and I've really enjoyed seeing over the last couple of years, just how that freshman seminar and the orientations have really helped develop a much greater comfort level, and just kind of a different tone there on campus. So, thank you very much, and thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Mr. Stewart, for also being here in support of all of this. They're very visible at the school, all of you are. I think that that's a big thing as well, too, that the students see you and see your actions in action as well, too. So I appreciate that. After being at a lot of different sporting events in a lot of different schools, I also see, you know, just even the language that we use at the beginning of many of our sporting events is to be good sportsmans, have good sportsmanship, which I see our students having, and I don't always see that when I'm at other schools, and I think that that has a lot to do with what you're all working on there at the school, so I appreciate what I'm seeing there as well.
Yeah, with the, with the safety survey, the leadership class on campus with, under the teacher, Ms. Stony, the kids have come up with the idea, like, let's, because we have some challenges, obviously, and so we want to get a handle on, like, what is, what are the feelings out there? Like, as they like to say, the morale's always highest in the general's tent, right? So what is, what are the people feeling? And what are some suggestions? Not only surveying, but then finding out, okay, what are some steps we can take? So the leadership class is actually working with the admin team, and then Ms. Redinger, our dean of students, who oversees our PBIS program.
Okay, yeah, it'd be great to hear a little bit about that if we can. And then before I forget, too, just with the cellphone use, I'm encouraged to see that that's going well. I know that that's been a school-wide strategy that it seems to be making a difference, and it's not that they don't get to use them at all, ever. I like the fact that they are, it's done through management in the classroom with how you're helping students work with that. So I think that that's great, because obviously, it's a huge distraction for students, for adults, and so there's gotta be the learning time where that's put away, but then also, how do you manage incorporating it when you might need to use it as a learning tool as well? That's it. That's it.
Kudos for exceeding the goal for freshman credits, for getting the cell phone usage down. I couldn't imagine, that's probably a big challenge. It's a great job. Thank you.
I wanted to piggyback off of Carrie's. The cell phone policy we presented last year, it's an appropriate-use policy, right? There's a sign in the classroom that says when and at what time students can use it?
Yeah, so we're trying to teach students how to use phones appropriately for, because there is a, there is a use for them in the classroom educationally. But teachers do have the red and green signs. And teachers have been really creative. Like, we purchased some chargers as kind of a pilot. And so several teachers have multiple phone chargers in their classroom. And so they tell students to be in class, hey, if you need to charge your phone. So literally half the class will bring their phones up and they'll charge them during the period. So they're not with the student. Some teachers use paper bags and they let, they let the students set it on their desk, but it's in a paper bag folded up. And so it's obvious to see if the student gets it out. They're, they're being really creative about, about how to manage that. But then also, like, how to appropriately use them in instruction? Whether it's through using Kahoots, which is a, a kind of a program where kids can give responses and teachers can see them on the board. But yeah, it's, it would be really easy just to say, hey, you can't use them at all. And then we fight every day. I don't particularly want to fight about that. It's not a hill I want to die on. But it is a challenge, but I think it's worth, worth the effort to teach them how to use them appropriately.
Thank you. I really appreciate that and it's, you know, it's a skill. We all have cell phones every day distracting us. You got to get through college or work wherever you're going. I also appreciate how you talked about the anchor charts in the classroom and there's just a lot of solutions going around, going on in the classroom for these almost adults who are still dealing with coming up with solutions and can be overwhelmed, you know? Use your phone, come up with the time that's appropriate to get help. Just thank you. The data's really encouraging and thank you to all the teachers also.
I appreciate listening to the whole thing, the, you know, several different points where we talk about not, you know, not one-size-fits-all solutions and not just blanketing the entire school with a, you know, a thing. Pretty sneaky on the chargers thing. I appreciate that. That's, that's good. And then are you finding, I know we're going to hit cell phones all night on this one, but are you finding it's getting easier and easier as it becomes more norm, more the norm? I know it's still early in the year, but...
I don't know if easy is the right word or not. I, I think that it all comes back to what kind of relationship has the staff built with the student?
Sure.
So those, those staff members that have taken the time and made the effort to get to know students have less issues than the ones who didn't.
And I think that we've seen that in, in all of the, the school improvement plans is that the, the people that truly find success out there are the ones that are engaging and getting in and knowing the teacher or knowing the students and, and where they are, where they're from and how to help them. Good job. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
James?
Yeah, thank you so much. It's great to see that improvement, excuse me. With the ninth grade, that's a significant improvement. If you were to credit one or two things, what is that, the, the key, I guess, to that change and that 10% increase and other increases across that ninth-grade class?
The key, in my mind, is the freshman seminar class. It's since, every freshman takes it. It's not a, it's not, it's not a you want to take it if you want or not. It's, every freshman is pre-enrolled in it. And we've selected the right staff. That's the key, is having the right staff member and, and then having a vision of what it is we want to teach them during their freshman year. And you, we, it, there is a big difference in looking at a junior who didn't have freshman seminar and a sophomore who did.
That's great. And I really appreciate it that we all said it, the cell phone battle. I, I know that takes teachers' time and attention and effort. So how do you, how do you support a teacher in that battle? What are some of those keys to helping the teacher? Because you have students coming in who maybe have never had a cell phone limited in their life.
So we ask, so we, we think that the best way to handle it is have teachers try to resolve the issue in the classroom with the student, working with the student. But if it gets to a point where the teacher has done that, they've notified the parents, then they do send them down to the office. We deal with it as an office referral. But it has, again, it all goes back to, those teachers that have taken the time to know their students, they can resolve it like that. It's, it really is, it really depends on the relationship the staff member has with the student. It's even like, I see it myself in students around campus that I don't necessarily know and something happens, I get a different reaction than those students I do know.
Anybody else? I've been involved with the high school now for several years and it's great to see you truly steering the ship instead of the ship steering you. And I thank you for all of your hard work.
Thanks.
And then next up is Mountain View Elementary's School Improvement Plan with Greg Woods.
Well, thank you. I think they told Bruce and I that we had about 20 minutes together, so I'm going to get mine done in about two minutes. So thanks, Bruce. Jokes aside, good evening, Board of Directors, Student Representatives, and Superintendent Jesse. For those that we've not met, my name is Greg Woods. This is my second year as principal at Mountain View and my second year in the Shelton School District. I also want to thank Assistant Principal Alex Brownsmith, who is supporting tonight. And I want to thank him for all of the support that he gives our students and staff on a daily basis. He's here tonight, attending lots of conferences. And I just really appreciate all the work that he does and him being here. I think it's important to know the students that we're talking about when setting any goals. And I think this is especially important when we're talking about school improvement plan goals. Each year, the cohort that we look at in a school improvement plan is different and unique. And I think it's important that we talk about the, each cohort as an individual group, especially when we talk about the ambitious goals that we're setting for them as well as the building and district practices that go into helping support them and get them to where they need to be. So with that said, I want to share a little bit about this third-grade cohort that we're talking about for our ELA goal. This is our largest class here at Mountain View. We have 20 new students added to this class this year, 117 students. This third-grade cohort has been, that has been at Mountain View has traveled a pretty interesting educational path. And I think this is important. Honestly, pretty much any student of that third-grade age group has traveled a pretty interesting path. If we go back to 2019 and 20, 1920 and 2021, when these kids were three and four, they were not having opportunities to socialize and certainly not opportunities for preschool. And I know Superintendent Jesse mentioned earlier tonight about the importance of that preschool experience. And these kiddos were right in the heart of the COVID time period. In 2021, 22, when they entered kindergarten, they were probably, I wasn't here in Shelton, but if it was anything like my experience in my previous district, they probably came back full-time for that kindergarten year, probably masked for part of the year when they're really trying to learn how to learn and they're trying to figure out how to socialize. And so these kids, and I think what, what I hope you'll hear is they are a tremendously resilient group of kids. We're really proud of them. They're working extremely hard, but they had some obstacles in their way coming through the ranks. Their first normal year, normal, was probably their first grade year. And so when we look at these kids here at Mountain View, I don't know, they, they have a place in our hearts because they have had to come so far in a short amount of time with a lot of barriers in their way. So with having said that, and it, it kind of paints a picture of struggle and barrier, I want to set all to the side and say, there's a ton of great news to talk about with this group of kids that we're looking at for our third-grade ELA goal. These are great kids with many strengths, talents, and gifts, including resilience. These kids can learn, they are learning, and they can rise to very high expectations, which we're setting for them. We have a committed, hard-working, and caring staff here at Mountain View to do this work and help them meet and exceed the goals that we set for them. Our building and our, our building and our district have school improvement and strategic plans in place to create, create powerful learning opportunities for all of our students, including this third-grade cohort. And then it helps us identify students that need additional supports to help us meet our goals. So looking at our first goal, by June 2025, the percentage of continuously enrolled students in third grade meeting or exceeding standard on the ELA. So again, we set 42%. And I want to just mention that these numbers are not arbit, not arbitrarily set. And again, speaking to the individual nature of each cohort, last year's group, that was set at 48% and that group met that goal due to a lot of hard work within our building. When we looked at assessment data that's kind of traveled with this group of students as well, as well as taking their path into consideration, using that assessment as a predictor for outcomes, and then taking into account the success that I think our third-grade team's going to have with these kids, that's how the number was set. And I think for each year, each individual group of kids, I think we have to take all those things into consideration when setting that number. Strategies that we're, we're implementing this year and have implemented the last couple of years, I think they're particularly important for the success of these kids. All students will have access to high-quality literacy instruction each and every day. A new word study program was created and implemented this year thanks to the hard work of district staff and teachers in the Shelton School District. We're already seeing positive gains with that program. Reading and writing workshops are present daily. Instruction, I think this one is very important. Instruction is aimed at high engagement for all students and always striving for students to gain more independence and ownership of their learning. As far as systems and structures to help us achieve this goal, school-wide grade-level and student-specific data is analyzed to make decisions for all students as well as identifying those students that need additional supports. Using assessment data as a guide, teachers will provide targets and differentiated literacy instruction and learning opportunities. And I think that differentiation piece is very key. Not all students learn the same way and at the same rate. And so our teachers are working very hard with the guidance of the district to really differentiate that instruction based on what the assessments are telling us for each individual student. See if I can figure this out. This would be some action shots of what we're trying to describe. But I think what's really important to see here is lots of different literacy-based opportunities and lots of books in the hands of kids and the right books in the hands of kids. And a love for reading and a love for learning. And I give the credit to our staff for that. Just some more pictures here. Again, I think a lot of engagement, which I know is a goal for all of our elementary schools. And again, as the students progress throughout the year, having them take more ownership of their own learning and gain that independence, which is crucial. So heading to our second goal, one of the things that I wanted to mention about this cohort as well that we, that I think kind of led us to this goal. In addition to kind of the path that they took, one of the things that Mr. Brownsmith and I noticed going through the data was that this particular third-grade cohort attached to our goal, first goal, had a very high absentee rate last year as second graders. And actually, if you follow their path through the school system, there's a, there's a pretty high absentee rate for that particular group of students. And if you trace it back to, again, something I, I mentioned earlier about their kindergarten experience, attendance rates a lot of times are established in that kindergarten year. Families figure out what school's all about. They figure out the importance of school. They figure out the importance of having school, or having their kids at school daily. And if you think about this particular group of kids and what was going on in the world at that time, that probably stunted their absenteeism, or excuse me, stunted their regular attendance a little bit. And so if we're going to get these kids to where we want them to be, we've had to really put an emphasis on regular attendance and that connection to, to student success academically, which kind of leads us to our second goal. But it's not just about our third-grade students, it's about all Mountain View students. We have noticed that we would like to see our absenteeism rate go down significantly. We had a lot of students last year that were missing a lot of school and it stands to reason that was impacting their academic success. So the number of students enrolled at Mountain View with chronic absenteeism, which we labeled as 15 or more days absent, will be reduced by 50% or more. Again, this is not just specific to our third graders. This is all of our students. Mountain View will reduce that number of students K4 with chronic absenteeism from 204 to 102 students during the course of this school year. So we tried to come up with a secondary goal that related to our initial goal because one of the things we found if we're going to have our third-grade students succeed, we need them here at school. And I'm glad Mr. Brownsmith is here because he's been a really key player in our push for attendance this year at Mountain View. We've made it a priority. One of the things that I, I want to mention about that, Alex, was, Mr. Brownsmith was going into individual conferences tonight. We identified students that had already established a little bit of a pattern of absenteeism this year. And Mr. Brownsmith was sitting in on those conferences and talking to those families about the importance of regular attendance. I appreciate that work. And we have three or four staff members that'll be doing that through the course of this week. Our counselor, our SEL teacher, Alex, and myself will be joining some of those conferences. A couple of things about this particular goal that I think are important. One of the biggest things, and I heard Bruce talk about in his presentation, was relationships. And we talk about it with our staff that if we want kids to be here, they have to see the value in being here and we have to have that relationship with them and their families to make it a priority. So our teachers are working extremely hard to create warm and welcoming classroom communities where students feel as though they belong and they want to be here. Our staff and administrators are being proactive with phone calls when absenteeism starts to become an issue. Our staff know the story, strength, and needs of our students and families to help understand and break down the barriers that might be preventing them from regular attendance at school. So we're not punitive. It's more problem-solving and trying to figure out what the issues may be and how can we break those barriers down to make sure kids are getting here. Again, a warm and welcoming environment coupled with academic rigor help to establish a sense of belonging and, we believe, academic engagement. Administrators, again, are propping into teacher conferences where absenteeism is an issue. Systems and structures related to this particular goal, we have behavior support plans in place for those students that are exhibiting absenteeism. The importance of regular attendance and its connection to academic success is shared in staff and family communications as well as reference on a daily basis on our morning announcements with our students. Attendance data is shared regularly with staff. We have Tier Two, Three meetings, which focus on attendance data and supports will be discussed for those students that need them to get them to school. And some of our individual staff members have individual caseloads of students that we're checking in on with phone calls and just checking in when we see them at school to see how they're doing and making sure that they're having a good school experience and want to be here every day. So I, I feel, I, I want to go back to probably the first thing that I think is, is the most important thing in all of this when it comes to the absenteeism push that we're having. It's the relationship that these kids have with their teacher. And if they have that relationship, our teachers have established that relationship, they will want to be here. But we also recognize that sometimes with, with students not being here, it's not always a student issue. There could be things going on with the family and we need to work with those families to help get them here[1691.66] help get them here and break down those barriers that might keep kids from being here. So, those are our two goals and our school improvement plan for this coming year. Are there any questions?
Anybody?
Great goals, and you can tell you put a lot of time, thought into developing strategies to achieve these goals, so good job.
Thank you.
I really appreciate how you started it out by painting the picture, because I think it's, as some of us get some distance from COVID, it's easy to forget exactly where those kids were just a couple of years ago and the impact that that has. And that even makes more sense to me as we talk about absenteeism and how some of those, you know, being very vigilant about being sick and not going to school when you have, you know, symptoms, and maybe the context of that has changed a little bit now, where that's more okay to do that now than it used to be, but those habits were started. So that really helped to hear that. And I just really appreciate, you know, whether it was Bruce or you talking about the relationships, that you're having that be the culture of your school, to, you know, whether it's the superintendent saying, "No, the story, strength, the need," but really doing that and encouraging the teachers to do that, because that's the key to the learning and to the fitting in and everything, and I really love hearing the emphasis on that. So thank you very much for your report tonight, I really liked it.
Thank you.
Looking at the absenteeism and all that, I look back to my, when I was in third grade, still remember it. And what are some of the strategies that you're employing to kind of reach out to engage with the parents? I know as a third grader, I didn't drive to school, I didn't make a lot of decisions, things like that.
Sure.
You know, if I was sick, it was my mom that said, "Stay home," it wasn't me.
Yeah.
And so where are we kind of on that? I think that's, that's an important part of this.
Yeah, I think the, the most powerful tool we have is a conversation face-to-face, whether it be by phone or at a student-parent-teacher conference, like Mr. Brownsmith was visiting today. I think he would tell you, if I invited him up, he's saying, "No, thank you." If I invited him up here, I think he would tell you that there's a story behind every situation, and he was, he and I were talking tonight before this meeting started, as he was coming out of some of those conferences, that sometimes it's people choosing to take vacations in the middle of a school year, that's a parent education piece. On the other hand, it could be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it's not probably my position to judge that. On the other hand, I think it's something that was mentioned, is I think there's some relearning and reteaching with families about symptoms of being sick or not being sick. We spent so much time telling people to stay home, and I think that's a learned behavior now, and so now it's trying to kind of reverse that and say, "No, it's okay, you can come back if these are the symptoms." So I think there's just some teaching that we have to do with, with our families, because you're right, it's generally not the third grader that's choosing to go or not go to school. But, you know, for some families, it could be a transportation issue. It could be a change in their, in their family structure or something going on in their family, and so that's why having that phone conversation or that sit-down visit, and hopefully they, they trust you, and hopefully they're willing to tell you their story, so then you can help them break down those barriers and get them to school.
Well, it's good to hear you're engaging with them and trying to get that to the bottom of most of that. Anybody?
Thank you. It's really great to see the absentees go down. You can't learn if you aren't here, right? Do you see a trend in the second and first in kindergarten where that's changed from that COVID class, from that third grade class where the attendance is up? Do you see a trend there yet?
Yeah, looking at, I mean, I think this particular group, we took note of for a variety of reasons, and we're kind of keeping them close to the vest for a variety of reasons. I think it's kind of the sweet spot of when a lot of things were happening, and again, kind of, it was interesting, I didn't originally intend to kind of chart their path for the board tonight, but I started to kind of dig into it a little bit and kind of think back about their path through the education system, and just started to see they were just in that sweet spot, especially of missing out on those, as three- and four-year-olds, that preschool opportunity, that's, that's a time for a lot of socialization that they just missed out on. And so that kind of translated to the absenteeism, we just started to see things. Back to your original question, I would say that they are the group with the most absenteeism that we've seen, so again, I think it's kind of a sweet spot there, and I think we're coming out of that. I think the kid, the younger kids before them missed a lot of it, and I think the group, the groups a couple of years in front of them also missed a lot of it, so it's kind of just where it hit for that particular group. I think it's just kind of an interesting, an interesting note.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate all the thought and the data. You can tell that you're making data-driven decisions, which is great, and I really appreciate how you closed the loop on here between the classroom and the family. There's a lot of outreach, and when you provided this plan to us, I really saw how it goes back to our district-level strategic plan, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing for me. You mentioned several times that they kind of missed those first couple of years of real Are you seeing, not necessarily more discipline problems, but a different brand of discipline problem or different brand of issues than the kids either north or south of this sweet spot?
This is an active bunch.
Okay.
I, I think they have had to relearn how to be together, and, and we have seen a fair amount of reteaching and restorative work with this group to help them understand what it's, what it's like to be a learner in a classroom, what it's like to work together, what it's like to be a friend, what it's like to not react in certain ways. Whether it's a coincidence that this is the, the group in our school right now that's probably needed the most social and emotional support, it could be a coincidence, but they have needed it, and they'll continue to need it through their path. They're great kids. I mean, Mr. Brownsmith and I said, "We love these kids," but they, they've got their challenges. But, you know, I don't like to paint with a broad brush, but we're talking about a group goal and some group dynamics, and so we love these kids, and they're going to be great, and we're going to meet that goal, but it's not going to, not that they haven't had their challenges along the way.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Evergreen Elementary Student Performance with Paula Kennedy.
We come as a team, so I'm going to introduce you to two amazing teachers through the collective efforts of all the teachers at Evergreen that these two amazing students passed through over the years. You will get to hear their writing and their, the results, it's very exciting. So first, I'm going to introduce, I'll do one at a time, I'm going to introduce you to Imelda Acosta, she's third grade teacher of our dual-language program.
I'm very happy to introduce Sofia Franco, a third-grade student. Today, Sofia will read the reasons why she likes attending Evergreen Elementary, and we also share with us a personal narrative about a day she went to the playa. Her parents are from Mexico and are here with us today, and she's very proud of them. Sofia will read with pride, and the most special part is that she will do, do these in both English and Spanish, as she's very proud to be bilingual. We hope you enjoy her presentation.
La razones por las cuales me guste era la escuela Evergreen Elementary. Mi nombre es Sofia Franco. Me guste era la escuela Evergreen Elementary porque mi primer idioma es español. Mis papás María y Ricardo hablan español, y tengo familia en México que también habla español, como mi tía María y Laura. Si yo no hablara español y solo inglés, no podría comunicarme con ellos. Me gusta mucho que mi maestra acosta es bilingüe y me enseñen los dos idiomas. Me encanta que mi cerebro trabaje en dos idiomas, y sé que cuando crezca podré conseguir un buen trabajo fácilmente. Además, podré ayudar a muchas personas que no hablan inglés, dándoles el servicio que se merecen. The Reasons Why I Like Going to Evergreen Elementary School by Sofia Franco. I like going to Evergreen Elementary School because my first language is Spanish. My parents, María and Ricardo, speak Spanish, and I have family in Mexico who also speak Spanish. Like my auntie Laura and María, if I didn't speak Spanish and only spoke English, I wouldn't be able to communicate with them. I really like that my teacher misses. Acosta is bilingual and teaches me in both languages. I love that my brain works in two languages, and I know when I grow up, I'll be able to get a good job easily, because I'll be able to help many people who do not speak English, bring them the service they deserve. Thank you.
Okay, that was a good job.
Don't you smell looking like the English? One Day, One Day at the Beach by Sofia Franco. One day I went to the beach, me, can we go to the water? My uncle showed by eat something first, me, okay. I ate a tomato, and then we went to the water. I was excited when I sat in the water. The waves pushed me backwards, and I felt so happy because I could, I was having fun. I could smell the fresh water, and then my uncle, let's go. Me, okay. We went back to my family and then back home. We put on my pajamas, lay down in my bed and play a movie. A little later, my mom came into my room. My mom, are you hungry? Me, no. Mom, my mom, okay, are you thirsty? Me, no, mom. Then my mom left. Something I learned that day was that the water can be different colors, and the sand can be cold. I also learned that fireworks are cool and sand, they're not scary at all. The sand felt soft, cold, and even hot sometimes.
Thank you very much.
Our next student is, our next teacher to introduce our student is brought to us with Gwen Owens, and she is a teacher on our Student Services Program.
Hi, my name is Gwen Owens, and I've been a teacher at Evergreen Elementary for about seven years, and I've been working with Rafael since he was in kindergarten, and the amount of growth is just incredible. He's been in the dual-language program since kindergarten, and now he's in fourth grade, and his writing, his reading, you know, he's just, he loves to learn, and he's becoming proficient with technology. He typed his essay, he also can use speech to text, so he's proficient with all of those things, and he wrote an essay, and he's going to read it to you right now. Rafael?
Okay, this is kind of my first time using a microphone like this. Okay, so, hi, my name is Rafael Aguirre Sosa, I am a fourth grader in Evergreen Elementary, and I'm also going to talk about why I love Evergreen. I have been in Evergreen for a long, long time since I was in kindergarten, so I'm going to talk about why I love Evergreen first. I have a lot of nice friends, Evergreen has nice students, next we get free food in the cafeteria, this is my family, like, you know, like with the money thing, yeah. Then at recess, you get to play games, we get to do cool things like soccer, basketball, and football. I really, really love school. After school, sometimes on Thursday and Tuesday, we get to play soccer at Loop Field, maybe some of the kids didn't sign up. But soccer is cool when you play with Mr. Gonzales, he is the coach, he's funny sometimes when he is at soccer. At Evergreen, you don't have to be perfect to the teachers, the teachers still like you, even if you aren't perfect. I want kids to listen to the teachers, teachers can make your life better if you just listen to them, and I respect that. I like Mr. Goodell because he is, he respects the kids, and he is funny, and I respect Ms. Kennedy, she is nice when kids come into her office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, got to get back on track here. Next up is the Consent Agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at that?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A motion. In a second, the motion.
With a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number seven, be, seven point oh one, be proposed revised policy number thirty-two forty-one, student discipline. Be Dusty Trickle and Wyatt Jesse, first reading.
Good evening, Board President Wielander, other Board Directors, Student Representatives, and Superintendent Jesse. My name is Dusty Trickle, Director of Student Wellness. I'm here tonight to discuss the updates to policy three-two-four-one regarding student discipline. So OSPI filed emergency rules clarifying and updating the Washington Administrative Code surrounding student discipline. The emergency rules are effective immediately, permanent rules are anticipated to be in effect by next school year. Updating older wax is a common practice, and these updated rules better align with the RCWs and maintain focus on the disproportionality in discipline. These rules are generally updated each year. You'll see the updates in the notes in the policy that you have. The policy changes are also related to the administrative procedures. A couple of the key changes to the rules are clarification for classroom exclusions. Most of the language around exclusions was updated, however, the process for how students are removed from class has not changed. Another change in the new rules takes the definition of discipline and breaks into two different definitions, so they now separate discretionary discipline and non-discretionary discipline. Discretionary discipline is a disciplinary action taken by a school district for student behavior that violates rules of student conduct. Non-discretionary discipline really goes into all of the illegal things that are outlined in the RCWs. The new changes also require school districts and boards to revisit district policies and procedures to ensure that all staff work cooperatively toward consistent enforcement of proper student behavior throughout each school, as well as within each of their classrooms. Another change is that it replaces the term emergency expulsion with emergency removal. As I went through the policy, almost all of that had already been updated, we just did a little bit more cleaning up to make sure that it was throughout the whole policy. So this is a first reading of the update, do you have any questions for me?
Yes, I do. The paragraph engaging with school personnel, students, parents, family, and community in decisions, how are the parents and community involved in, in these decision-making?
Can you, can you tell me which paragraph, sorry? Just so I can...
One, two, three, four, the fourth one down, beginning with engaging.
On which page?
Page one.
Oh, page one, got you.
So you refer to the bullet specifically, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, yes. So on that particular issue, I'll take this one, Dusty is just around, we do engage them, we do have our posted handbook, so they do have the expectations out there, so we do engage them in trainings for both staff and students, and so that, that information's required to be posted. And then we do have our own ability to, when we do discipline, it is required for us to engage with the parents, so there's a notification, and so we work with them about what that is, and the engage, I know some of the issues, like even Principal Woods was talking about for Mountain View, so, so like, sometimes, you know, like, you would engage and call them up, and then sometimes these parent-teacher conferences is a good time to engage with them around things to preventative stance, but if it goes to straight discipline, we do have to do formal notification of them.
It says, but there... It says, but they're involved in development and implementation of the discipline policies and procedures.
So again, that's back on the handbook. And then we also engage with them through, we have PTSOs at the, at the, at the school sites. And so we engage with them about what some of the policies are that help support, you know, discretionary, non-discretionary. I think some of the challenges that come with that is also specifically that the level of like, what's the impact on students as opposed to formal technical things that come with the RCWs and the, and the WACs, which are not discretionary for school districts.
Okay. And so the last bullet on the page is you removed the word parent, parents, from facilitating collaboration between school personnel, students, and parents. So why was parents removed out of that?
So in the update with the new WAC proposal, they replaced parents with families, I think, to be more inclusive of structures.
Well, but you, you used the word parents above in other parts. I'm just curious why it's in some and not others. I understand families, that, that makes sense. But up here it says parents, families.
I think we could just add that one back in. That's fine. I think it's just redacted. I mean...
Okay. That's it.
With this, as teachers are frontline on living this out day-to-day, as you go through the changes, do you collaborate with teachers in our district? And then second, how do you communicate those changes so that the, the questions from an individual teacher on the implementation is actually fully understood? Kind of two questions there. Is there collaboration in, in the forming of that policy? And then second, how's that communicated to your individual teacher?
So I think within each building administrators, as, so we just met with administrators the other day and talked about all the changes in the policy. And then within each building, the administrators communicate any changes with teachers. Fortunately, within the changes, the procedures for classroom exclusions hasn't changed for how teachers are able to remove students from classrooms.
And, and maybe this is not the right question, but is there collaboration to say, hey, since we're going through and, and getting this cleared up, is there anything we should be addressing that maybe isn't addressed at a teacher level? Is there an opportunity for teachers to share those discipline concerns, right? So it's been a, a challenging thing sometimes across the district for teachers and discipline. Is, is there any back and forth on that communication? I'll take that, that part. So each year, I mean, so like, it's a lot of layers because it's, you have things about calibrating practice, right? And so there are differences. If you even go through the data, like, who does an office referral, right? Who's this spending? Like, some of the things you could hear from Principal Kipper, like, like, hey, some staff have differences in their relations with students or structures, routines. So some of it's calibration of just how do you define a behavior and what gets an office referral or a write-up. And then there's the notion of also the, what are the underlying practices of, you know, any educator? So, I mean, there is layers to this conversation. Each year that they, we do go through what is called a, we call it a flow chart, which is what are truly school or district discipline, right? So what is more of a minor versus a major? So they, they work together as a staff to calibrate what is a minor and a major based on the discipline codes that we have here for the district, so that we can keep engaged in that. We have new staff, year to year, cohorts change, things, things. And so you're, you're constantly working on that each year, sometimes multiple times a year. For example, at OMS, I helped lead a training with the Principal Mary at the school, because she was new, and she had a lot of new staff. We had to do a December meeting to calibrate on what were minors and majors, how was it a handle? And then see even the process of like, how do I submit something? Do I enter that in? Who's going to refer it? And then they do hear back. So even in individual situations, Director Dale, it is down to then helping to work, which is some of the training for our administrators, is to walk down the hall and start engaging in with the staff of like, hey, tell me more about what happened. Is this more of a situation where we have a difference in calibration? Is this more of a situation for your own practice or your relationship with a student? And so, you know, there, there are a lot of things that undergird really best practices. And so we try to engage always, whether that's a training or an individual student situation, to, to figure out, hey, what can we do best to figure out the situation? And it is what's the best course of action. Yeah. I don't have any more on the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to board member comments. And we'll start on the end with Director Dale. I don't have too many except for thank you, teachers and principals. Did you see that effort and the strategic vision being lived out and see that improvement? And so thank you, everyone. We know that is all the hard work of those teachers and those students out there. So thank you. Director Conquest?
I seen where the high school did bite of reality, educating the kids on financial reality, giving them a glimpse into what it's like. I think that's priceless, you know, for these students. And then Oceanview Middle School did the award ceremony for kids who completed the academic growth and social responsibility criteria. It's a good opportunity for them. Superintendent's report, I like the twenty-hour super internship for students. Thank you for your reports. Thank you to everybody who provided a report tonight. Very impressive work. Thank you.
Director Gilmore?
I would just like to thank everybody that's here tonight. And also really shout out and thank all the schools in the district during conference week. You can really feel the energy when you're entering the schools. I've been in, here in Bordeaux today, and it's just really an all-hands-on-deck experience. And I think that our, our community really shines in, in our conference week. You can see families in the book fairs. And they're just, just seeing more people in the building and seeing kids excited. And just the teachers, in, in my experience over from our school, have just been really great about emailing, getting back, and really making sure that you're, you can make the conference or do it virtually. And just, I really appreciate that. And I wanted to thank the students that came, but they, they managed to escape. But if you've ever had the experience or opportunity to learn in a full immersion language classroom, it's, it's overwhelming. And I, I always think about that, how, how difficult it is, and especially as a small child, just to communicate basic needs. And I'm just really, really proud of these students and appreciate their stories today.
And Director Davidson?
I don't, I don't have a lot to add. I wanted to say that, too, that the children that got up there to speak, they did an excellent job. I wish that we could have said that right before they left. Didn't know that they were going to leave that soon. But it's a lot to sit through a long meeting like this. But it's never easy to get up in front of a group of people and speak. And they did an excellent job. And their teachers did a wonderful job preparing them for that. So that was nice to see. I always appreciate the student reports and hearing what's going on in each one of the schools. It sounds like there's some exciting spirit weeks going on. And a haunted house might be very interesting next week, too. So thank you for sharing all of that with us. Thank you for the school improvement plans. That wraps up our school improvement plans, doesn't it? Is that it for our schools at this point? No, we still have a few more. What's that? Oh, that's right. That's right. I was like, gosh, we've gotten through all the high schools now, and I'm missing the middle schools. Yes, it's like my brain these days. Anyway, and yes, conference week, you're stealing my thunder with all of the comments, because I get, I've got conferences tomorrow. And I do always appreciate those touchpoints with the teachers and the advisory teachers and, and just being in the buildings. It's an opportunity to really see what's going on. And I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers, principals, assistant principals, administrative staff for all of the extra work that they do during this conference week, because I know they've, they're quite busy. So, yeah.
Well, I almost stopped those kids before they left and, or interrupted Dusty. I don't know which I was going to do, but I, I, that shows a tremendous amount of effort on their part. I know I hate speaking publicly, and I feel like I do too much of it. The haunted house on the thirtieth, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how the gardens and the everything go out, how that goes. Choice, looking forward to your, you know, your spirit week and, and everything there. Abigail, I want to talk to you about how you feel about the cell phone stuff afterwards. So...
I just want to ask all the students.
Okay, so after. No, you can do it now. Go ahead. Interrupt me. It's okay.
So the students actually put together the survey, and then they're sending it out in the next couple advisories. We're kind of planning on that. And then, once we get the data from that, we're going to present it to admin. And then actually, the whole leadership class or a few students are going to come to the next board meeting, once we get that, and present that information to you guys, and kind of give you guys a student perspective on it. And, because they want to voice it, too. So...
Outstanding. Looking forward to that. It was great to see that the teachers and administrators are all addressing the, the kids' individual needs individually. They're, they're taking care of all this stuff. And, and, you know, it can be overwhelming when, you know, you get to hear some of the, the stories, and you're still trying to teach these kids and make that positive difference in their lives. So I will wrap it up by reminding all of the staff out there. You do have an EAP. You do need to take care of yourself. Because as I tell people constantly, sick people cannot cure other sick people. Make sure you take care of yourselves. With that, I don't believe we have anything other to do but adjourn, and I'm just waiting for that motion.
I'd like to make an emotion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then. Good night.